Okay, I'll make sure that I send it out again if that would help.
Jackie, the link wasn't live, it had to be copied and pasted.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's beyond my skill set.
All right, well, we have two items of business for this body this morning. We're being asked to approve the creation of a new fund and we are being asked to approve a new set of bylaws. I'd like to call on a member of the Hope Fund Committee, I think Alyssa May, to make the first motion this morning.
Morning, friends. I'm delighted to be here with you and I am happy to make the first motion this morning. I move that the Vermont Conference of the United Church of Christ establish a hope fund for innovation among our churches, for our societal impact, and for new ministry among us.
I second that. Suzy Webster-Tolino.
It's been moved and seconded that the Vermont Conference of the United Church of Christ establish a hope fund for innovation among our churches, for our societal impact, and for new ministry among us.
So just for the record, who was it that passed the motion and seconded?
Alyssa May made the motion. And Suzy Webster. Seconded it. Any discussion? Alyssa, would you like to speak to it?
I would love to speak to it. I think that we are at the precipice of a new time for church, as many of us have lived it and known it. And one of the pieces of innovation that came from the conference, from Lynn and from Paul and from a group of people that I've had a chance to meet with and pray with and think big with over the last two years. We have brought to the conference this proposal that churches apply for and receive grant funding for new and innovative ministries. Several of my colleagues are on this call today who have been in this group with me and I'm wondering, I don't know, Paul, if we queued up any of them to speak, but this would be a good time if they wanted to.
Yes, well, actually, I do have a lineup of speakers here. And it is great that you all were able to join us this morning and thank you for doing so. And let me tell you just a little bit about why the Hope Fund came to be. Really, the Hope Fund comes out of the stark reality that ninety percent of people in Vermont don't go to church. We are one of the least religious states in the country. I would imagine that doesn't surprise most of you. You're well aware of this. You have trained to preach a couple of weeks ago at one of our churches. And a member came up to me and said, you know, 50 years ago, Paul, we had a hundred people here in church on Sunday and four rooms downstairs full of kids. And maybe you've heard that phrase in your own church, fifty years ago, this happened or this happened. I think we're all used to hearing that. So what is our reaction to all of that? Are we just going to ignore the fact that our culture has gotten more secular and that there are a lot less people going to church? Or can we be proactive in any way? I think what we need to do is to seek to build relationships with people who don't go to church. You know, fifty years ago, virtually, a lot of all the people didn't go to church in Vermont. Generally knew someone who was a Christian or had some idea of what was going on in churches. And if they had a crisis in their life, they knew who to, they knew they could go to a church, they could turn to a church. Today, a lot of the people who don't go to church in Vermont don't know any Christians. They don't know any followers of Jesus. They don't have a understanding of what goes on in a church. Indeed, if they have any view of Christians, they can sometimes be negative. So I think we need to find ways to help them know who we are and help them see what kind of a world we dream of. And we need to encourage innovation among us, new ministry among us, to do those things. So the Hope Fund will have two main purposes. One, to provide financial resources for our churches to do innovative and new things. And secondly, to remind us all that God is not done with us yet. You know, it is easy to get discouraged sometimes about the future, but we believe today that our future is in God's hands and God has plans for the Vermont Conference. Let me repeat that. Our future is in God's hands and God has plans for the Vermont Conference, so let's invest in that. We've seen that during this pandemic. We've seen so many of our churches be creative and innovative in things that they've been doing. Let's invest in that for the future. So our goal will be to raise $200,000, which will be money that we will seek to raise with our fundraising team from churches and from grant making organizations and from individuals. We'll seek to have a wide range of people participating, but we especially know that wealthy individuals will be probably the biggest givers because they care about the future of the church in Vermont. And that's ultimately about what the Hope Fund is about, is about the future of the church in Vermont. And our belief in it. And we're not going to be establishing an endowment fund, but instead, we will be giving away 100% of all the money given over the next 10 years to churches in Vermont. So what will a good Hope Fund grant look like? You know, that's a question I've heard a lot. And, you know, 20 years ago, the National Church has something similar to the Hope Fund. They had a Make a Difference campaign. Some of you might remember that. They had a fund and they allowed churches to apply for it. But the reality is very few churches in Vermont did so. And I think it's because a lot of us didn't really know what made a good Hope Fund grant. So to help with that question, this winter, the conference received a small request and the Board of Directors chose to use the money to give pilot Hope Fund grants to a few of our Vermont Conference churches that were part of the new ministry team. And a number of these churches have done some exciting things with their grants. And they're going to share their stories with you at the annual meeting in April. And that will hopefully spur the creativity of all of us. But as for today, I have just a couple other people I'm going to invite to speak. Andy Naj Benson is going to be the chair of the fundraising team if we approve the Hope Fund today. And Andy is going to speak about their work. And then a member of the new ministry team, Lava Mueller, is going to speak about the new ministry that she has begun called Love Church. So Andy and then Lava.
Thank you, Paul. Good morning to everyone. It's nice to see your faces. It's been a long time. I hope you're well. So when Paul asked me back in the spring to consider sharing this potential Hope Fund Committee, I did pause and think about this to see if if this is something that I have time to dedicate some time to. And clearly, I ended up with a yes. And I ended up with a yes because I really do believe that you care as much about your church and your community as I care about my church and my community. And I'm really interested in exploring ways that we can, we can build partnerships with folks in our own little local communities. And we, equipped by the Holy Spirit, will hopefully be able to take on some new initiatives that will strengthen our churches and the communities that we seek to serve. So in some ways, it's not very complicated. I really hope to have this launched today. We, the committee is ready to go. We met briefly just this past week to chat briefly. And we will, if given permission and blessing on this resolution, we will, we will get to work in January in the ways that Paul alluded to. And we'll work hard for you. So that's the idea here. It's, I mean, our hope is in God. And our hope is also in the spirit that equips us to do our ministries. And I know that there are times when, in which we have a good idea, but we don't have the funding to carry it out. I would imagine most people on this call have run up against that at some point or another. And this, I hope, we'll hope, will help you and your churches and the communities in which you live become a little closer to the beloved community of our collective imagination. So it's really an honor to be here. The team that we have in place is an all-star lineup. I'm humbled to be in their company. I suppose if this resolution passes, I could introduce this committee, but we don't exist yet. And so you all bless this effort. So I don't want to get too ahead of ourselves, but I'm just delighted to have this opportunity to serve the conference in this way. It was a joy to be on the board and the chair of the board. And after a couple of years away from that, I'm, I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and do the best work we can do for you and the churches that you love and the communities in which you live. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Andy. Lava, I think you were going to speak now?
Yep, I'm next. Hi, everybody. It's Lava Mueller. And I just want to say that in this moment that I'm sitting here with all of you, which is such a blessing. I'm also looking out my, my window, out the door, and I'm watching the parishioners of Love Church, because we worship on Saturday mornings. And I left early to come to this meeting, but I'm watching people coming down the hill from the, from the woods, wearing their orange hunter caps, hats that we provided for everyone. Guess today is the first day of hunting season. And I'm watching them, they've just kind of marched, they've come down the hill and now they're gathering in front of our house around a campfire that my husband made. And they are going to have the closing prayer and they're going to sing together. So we started singing and they're doing that without me today because I'm here with you. So that's just this little moment of what Love Church is. We worship on Saturday mornings. We come sit on the porch, it's all outside right now, and we meet and we offer prayers and we pray. Then we go in the woods and we sit, we used to sit in the woods separately for 20 minutes. And last week, people requested that we sit for half an hour instead. And it was really cold last week when they said that. So people are pretty dedicated. They're bringing sleeping bags. We're, we're just sitting in the woods and we're grooving on the beauty of nature and God's creation. So, so that's kind of a backdoor, backdoor way of telling you about Love Church. Love Church was created and thought of and came about during this group that Paul had mentioned of a bunch of ministers. Some of us are here today, the new ministries group, thinking of new ideas. We have, something has to change, as Paul was saying, something has to change. And I love that Lynn started the meeting by talking about, go forth, go forth, go forth. That's our command, go forth and create and bring people together. So Love Church is a brand new church that is intentionally for people who are not interested in going to church, who have either, maybe they've never been to church. Possibly, they have been, many of them actually have been hurt by the church, bad experiences, either growing up or in their adult life, or, you know, some of them have been quite hurt, actually. And so they've turned away. And so this is, but they still want to connect with spirit and want to connect with each other in a way through prayer and, and so, so we have a number of different offerings. We have a website, which I'd be happy to share with you. I'll put it on the chat after this. We have, and I will get to where the Hope Fund is part of it in a, in a moment. We have, yeah, someone's, someone's coming in. We have most of our Saturday morning worship, as I mentioned. We have dinner church offerings, which we have done live and virtual during the summer. And they will go just virtual for the winter. We did a creative writing workshop, which was just wonderful because many people came and we began in prayer and meditation. So really, so much of what Love Church is, is people, teaching people about prayer. We're kind of starting at the beginning, starting with the basics. What is prayer? How can we pray for each other? Oh, thank you for, thank you, Amanda. There's so much I could say about Love Church right now, and I know this is going to be a kind of a long meeting. So I want to keep it simple and focus on the Hope Fund. We were so delighted that we did, we were able to receive a grant from the Hope Fund. And we at Love Church use that money to buy electronic equipment so that we could have our dinner church, which is so much fun, you guys. If you've never done dinner church, that's something I really want to teach everybody how to do because everybody can do it. But we were able to buy equipment to use so we could do both virtual and in-person dinner church at the same time. And it's just been fabulous. And I am so grateful that you are all considering supporting this fund because this has helped a brand new church as part of our conference, hopefully, eventually, get off the ground. And it's doing exactly what Paul was hoping, which is inviting people. Honestly, there's nobody who's coming to Love Church who's, who's at all active in a church and most of them haven't been or have been hurt, as I said. So it's really happening. It's starting. And also, you know, I think this money is, is, is helping other people in our group to just think of new ways. I mean, I actually think I have it the most, the easiest, much easier than, than the other people in our group because I'm starting from scratch with a brand new church. And I think it's a lot easier to start something new than it is to transition something that's already existing into something new again. So I really offer my blessings to my colleagues in this group who have also received some money, which you'll hear more about in the future because they are doing amazingly wonderful things with their money, with their grant money from the Hope Fund to bring in community. And it's working. So blessings to you all. I don't know if you have any questions about Love Church? But that's it for me, unless you have questions. Thank you.
Great. So that does finish kind of our presentation of the Hope Fund. And, and all three of us are open to questions that anybody else. Debbie?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could say a little bit more about, is there an application process? Or how do, how do people seek out the Hope Funds?
Yes, we will create an application process that will be very simple. You know, I know if you apply to something like the Lilly Grant, you know, it's like 50 pages long or something. We already know all of you. We know your churches. We know your communities. We believe in you. So there will be like a one to two-page application that we will ask you to fill out. And there will be a grant making committee that will be in charge of determining, you know, who receives funds and how much they receive. But yes, that, that will all come into focus in 2022, when, when we hopefully have some money to start distributing. Lynn?
There we go. I also wanted to make sure that people knew that the seed grants that have been given out were, we were able to do that because of a couple of bequests, one which came from John Nutting and the other one which came from Betty Ludwig. And so between those two grants, there was approximately $20,000 that the Board of Directors okayed to be used for these seed grants. And Paul, could you name just a few of the projects?
Yes, well, one project involves doing a disc golf course. This is our church in Westover. They're doing a disc golf course in conjunction with the town. And it's a great way to build relationships with the community and with families in the area. And they're, again, they're looking forward to sharing their experience with you in April. Another church, our church in Brattleboro Center Church, they're, they're using the space out in front of their church to like host concerts and events for people in the community. And using that as a way, again, to build relationships with people in the community, to share God's love with people in the community. They found it's been a wonderful way to heighten the visibility of their church in the community. And so that's just a couple of examples. And again, you'll hear a lot more about these and others in April. Let me turn, have a couple of questions out here. I think Allison and then Daniel. Allison?
There. I was wondering if you had an idea of what a sample amount would be for considering these grants? So if we had a community building project, which we do, but, and we wanted to apply for it, what is going to be sort of the norm for an amount to be asking?
Yeah. Well, the, the pilot Hope Fund grants were all $2,500. But, but that is probably a ballpark number. But I definitely could go higher or lower than that depending on the situation.
And you said it's going to start in 2022, you believe?
That's right.
Okay.
Raising team will raise the money or at least start the portion of it.
If Andrew does his job, that's what you're saying.
So up to Andy. But Daniel?
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Hi, hi all. Dan Wright, I'm a retired pastor in Waybridge. And I had a couple of, I mean, to be supportive, but, but some money questions. And one is just, just wondering, my understanding was that the motion that's on the floor, at least as I saw it online, had, had the second sentence about creating the fundraising team. And I was wondering, shouldn't that be part of the, shouldn't that be part of the motion? There must be some reason why you decided not to put it in. And on, on the subject of fundraising, how would the UCC strengthen the church offering relate to this? Because doesn't, doesn't the conference have the option of retaining something like 20% of that? And if so, why couldn't that, you know, be funneled in into the Hope Fund? So those are my questions.
Thanks, Dan. And maybe I'll let Peter pick the first of those questions.
Yeah, sure. I asked, actually asked the committee to separate this into two motions because they seem to be two different items of business. And it just gets complicated when two items of business are in one motion.
Yeah. And as for the second one, I think Lynn and I will definitely talk with the Board of Directors about using the strength of their church offering in that way. Dan, that's a great idea and one that certainly I want to consider.
We have a question from Greg Briggs, wondering what the initial fundraising goal, if this fund is approved, would be?
The initial fundraising goal is $200,000.
Thank you.
And I would say that this, we actually use the strength in the church money fairly, fairly often. And we have been using it for things that would qualify as new church initiatives. But we've also used it in several other ways. And I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have the folder in front of me, but that money doesn't just sit idle. It does get, it does get used for the benefit of, of the churches and pastors of our conference.
Seen no hands up. Double check. Are you ready for the question? The question is on the adoption of the Vermont, that the Vermont Conference of the United Church of Christ adopt the proposal to create the hope, to establish a Hope Fund for innovation among our churches, for our societal impact, and for new ministry among us. You should get a poll in a moment to vote. There should be an allowance for abstentions. And after the poll is up, before I announce the vote, I will ask for abstentions.
So at this point, we have 90% has participated in the poll. And my apologies, I just put yes or no. I should have put abstention in as well. So my apologies on that.
So let me simply.
To this.
That's okay. Jackie, thank you. Let me just ask for a raise of hands for any who abstain from this vote. Scrolling through, scrolling through. I see, I see no abstention. So I will state that the question that, about the Vermont Conference establishing a Hope Fund for innovation among our churches, for our societal impact, and for new ministry among us has passed 100% to 0%. Thank you. As Daniel alluded to, we do have another piece of business relating to the Hope Fund, which we couldn't address unless we knew that it passed. And so I, I put that out there for another member to make another motion.
Peter?
Yes.
It's Alyssa. And I move that the Vermont Conference of the United Church of Christ approve the creation of a fundraising team who will raise money for the Hope Fund by reaching out to individuals, churches, associations, and grant making organizations.
Suzy Webster-Tolino, I second that.
It has been moved and seconded that the Vermont Conference of the United Church of Christ approved the creation of a fundraising team who will raise money for the Hope Fund by reaching out to individuals, churches, associations, and grant making organizations. It's your pleasure. Somebody speak to that?
I think we, we spoke to it already. Yeah, thanks. So.
Actually? Any other comment? Check the chat. All right, see no other comment. I'm assuming you're ready for the question. And the question is on the adoption of the motion that the Vermont Conference of the United Church of Christ approve the creation of a fundraising team who will raise money for the Hope Fund by reaching out to individuals, churches, associations, and grant making associations. You may vote yes or no, and I'll ask for abstentions again after the poll is up.
So 90%, the same as 90% have participated. So I'm going to end the poll. And I'll share the results.
While she's doing that, are there any abstentions? See none. You have passed that motion. Thank you very much. Andy?
I see that Paul has asked if it would be okay now to introduce the committee. And I'd be very happy to, if that's okay.
Sure.
Thank you. Alyssa Jong, Burlington. Kevin Goldenbogen from Charlotte. Lee McCaffrey, who's serving in Berry. And Lori Cruz in London Dairy. And of course, Paul is, has been with us in these, in these early prelude days. So that's, that is our team as of now. That may grow a little bit. We'll see, but we didn't want to do anything until after this vote. We'll see, but we didn't want to do anything until after this vote. So thanks so much for your support and I hope to serve each of you and all of us well.
And thank you all for your willingness to take this on. Yes, nice, big project and important. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Moving on to our next item of business, the consideration of a new set of bylaws for the Vermont Conference. You have known about this since the April 2021 Annual Meeting where we passed an amendment to the current set of bylaws so that we might have this meeting today. Prior to my joining the board almost a year ago, the board had been working hard on fine tuning what you have before you. This is the product of probably two years of work for the board and a lot of sweat, blood and tears by Dick Dale and Jeanie Zamatero. So I call upon Dick Dale right now, member of the Board of Directors.
I, the Board of Directors is very concerned that a sufficient number of people attend the approval of bylaws, which really do affect our church conference and the way we function within it. The conclusion that the board reached and the revisions seek to address several concerns, a lot of concerns about things that were passed in 2008, which was debated in 2008, adopted in 2009. That didn't work out nearly as well as we hoped that they would work. In addition to that, we also looked at the language of bylaws because the National Senate has revised its bylaws and other conferences have revised their bylaws and ours language is somewhat antiquated. And so therefore, I and I'm also concerned about an insufficient number. We have 64 people participating today. The Board of Directors has spent a lot of time working through and making sure that this is a document that represents the future of what we want the conference to be and the way it should be organized and functioned. But we wanted to make sure that a sufficient, the assembled quorum, and we are in quorum, of 64 people is sufficient to vote on this really necessary type of of bylaw revision. And so therefore, to ascertain that, and I hope that it that it fails, I make the following motion. I move that the consideration of the adoption of the new bylaws of to the Vermont Conference of the United Church of Christ be postponed to April 2022, the Vermont UCC Annual Meeting, where it will be part of the agenda. And and therefore, because the annual meeting is well attended, have a larger and more participate, larger participation. I move that. And if it fails, then I will move the adoption of the new bylaws.
I second it. Allison Young.
Thank you, Allison. It has been moved and seconded that the consideration of the adoption of the new bylaws to the Vermont Conference of the United Church of Christ be postponed to the April 2022 Annual Meeting of the Vermont Conference of the United Church of Christ, where it will be part of the agenda and will have a larger participation. Take a moment to consider that. If you have a question or a comment about that motion, raise your hand and I will call on you. Karen. Karen.
Hi, everyone. I'm, I'm Corinne. I'm the new minister at Waybridge. I just have a question about why the, this motion was initially scheduled for for this meeting as opposed to waiting in April? I'm just wondering if there was a, a reason for that. Thanks.
Dick, I think you might speak to that.
Yes, I, again, as I said in the preamble of my motion is that these, the change in bylaws and the way, the fundamental organization of the conference and 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 addressing problems is something that the Board of Directors was concerned that there be a sufficient number of people. At the time, we looked at it, there were 50 people registered. And and so the Board of Directors wanted to make sure that we had at least 100 people in in that sort of organization. But as Peter and I and Doug and Lynn all communicated back and forth, if people feel that they've, they've gotten the rationale, if they feel that the document which showed the proposed laws side by side with the current bylaws so that everybody could see the changes is sufficient. And people just really feel that it's time to make the necessary changes to make our conference work better, then they vote no. Otherwise, if if people want a bigger participation, then they vote yes.
Dick, I think that the the question was, was, was why we decided to hold this at a special meeting as opposed to.
I'm sorry, because the annual meeting last time was so full of stuff that that the five hours of debate that occurred in 2008 would not have been possible. And and so we wanted to give everyone a full opportunity, a full opportunity to really look at them, digest them, and 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 see what is there. And so we passed an amendment which allowed for a Zoom meeting, which we would have had, would would have needed, would need in April because I have a suspicion we may meet in a hybrid meeting. And and so that's why we established the, the, this particular special meeting. And it also gave everybody a little more opportunity to look at the rationale and look at the bylaws and assess whether or not it's something that people want to do.
And I think it must be said that back, back in April, we had hoped to be in person at this meeting.
Sure, yeah, that's helpful context. Thank you.
You're welcome. I think that Daryl had, had his hand up.
I think you mean Jane.
No, I had Daryl and then Skip and then Jane. Skip. Jane.
I, I would like to have Jane speak, but it seems to me that you've done wonderful work as a board and as a, the people that have been preparing for this meeting. And it seems to me that we could go ahead and vote no and then vote yes on passing it at this time. But I refer to what Jane wants to say. Thank you.
My quick question was, but I think you answered it. Will the annual meeting be a hybrid meeting for those who are not able to make it so that they can still vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Fred.
Thanks. I, I agree that the board, the board has done and the bylaw committee has done a fantastic job. I think that's been very clear what the changes are and how they compare. I think they're all great changes. My experience in my own church of bylaw changes, which I've been involved with for a number of years, is that people's eyes tend to glaze over when you mention by bylaws. And I think everybody here is probably devoted to the question of, of passing these today. And I, I fear that just delaying it would would merely delay it. I think we should go ahead.
Sue Church.
I agree. I would like to see us go ahead. I think that the, the, the members of the conference have been offered ample opportunity to, to come to this meeting. And so the folks who are here are perhaps the core that is dedicated to looking at this. I hope we will defeat the motion.
Are you ready for the question? Okay, the question before us is on the consideration of the adoption of the new bylaws to the Vermont Conference of the United. Be postponed to the April 2022 Vermont Conference Annual Meeting, where it will be part of the agenda and will have a larger participation. The poll will be sent out for that.
One more second if you haven't voted.
The motion to postpone consideration and adoption of the new bylaws to the Vermont Conference Annual Meeting in April 2022, where it will be part of the agenda and where there will be full participation, has been defeated. Dick, I believe you would make.
Yeah.
Other motion.
Move the adoption of the proposed bylaws as, as sent to all of the churches 60 days ago.
I second Fred Bruning.
Thank you, Fred. It has been moved and seconded that the proposed bylaws as sent out 60 days ago be approved. Can you speak to that, Dick?
Basically, I, I think that the document is, is, is clear, especially when you look at the comparison. And I'd specifically like to thank the, the board and especially Peter and Lynn and Doug Carter for creating this extensive comparison. The second thing that I would say is many of the changes that we've done address the problems and Lynn and the rest of the board can speak to some of, of the considerable problems. The biggest problem is that we're a small conference. We have relatively few people who have the capacity and willingness to serve on the multiple committees that are established. And the associations are required for virtually all positions to submit by the associations, at least three people who are willing to serve. And the nominating committee and other committees find that once you're appointed to committees, you, you're assumed to be there for what appears to be a life tenure. And what we've tried to do with the committee's structure is to, one, make it, make small, smaller committees, task oriented committees, so that when the task is completed, then the good thing is the membership and, and the will on that committee. And there are basically five standing committees, which are absolutely essential to the functioning of, of, of things. And we took a look at the potential membership and the potential limits of for terms and that sort of thing and tried to establish a more reasonable kind of expectation of if you kind of have gotten fatigued serving on that committee, a way of, of gracefully resigning. And when we have adjusted the responsibility for making appointments to committees, first to the nominating committee, but ultimately, as it always has been, the responsibility of the Board of Directors. We need to find people who are capable of serving in some of the positions. For example, the investment committee requires a little bit of expertise, although it's always useful to have somebody who has no expertise, who can listen to the arguments and, and, and bring to the table a kind of point of view of everybody else in the world. The mission and our global ministries committee was another permanent committee, needs pretty good and high developed competence. The, and so there, the committee structure is important. Secondly, we feel the Board of Directors, because we've proposed this document, really feels rather strongly that the Board of Directors should be responsible for orchestrating and running the conference and that the nominating committee for years has depended upon the goodwill competence and expertise of the conference minister. That's not going to change in terms of knowing people who could possibly ask, be asked. If the nominating committee can't fill the slots and we've lowered the number of people on the committee, more people can be added to the committee if people are willing to serve, then the, then the Board of Directors assumes responsibility using the fact that each of the associations has a representative on the Board of Directors. And then there are other, I'll call them at large members who bring to the board competence. But we on the board can't get two associations to nominate anybody to the Board of Directors, which is one of the failures of this old bylaws. And in the absence of that, the bylaws suggest that the Board of Directors can reach out and appoint an appropriate person for that association and or reach out and appoint someone so that we have a full Board of Directors. The moderator, I've, Jean Zamatero has been moderator, others have been moderators. And it turns out that after one year, you learn a tremendous amount about how to do the moderating so that you make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak, that parliamentary rules are, are observed, that the pace of the meeting is appropriate for the annual meeting. And then because of the old bylaws, as if you're a moderator and would like to serve again, you can't. you can't serve again. So treasurer, same deal. We've put a a limit on the Office of Treasurer and allowed for the treasurer. And it's a pretty exhausting job. I'm treasurer of three different organizations. And you get tired of it. And so you exercise a great deal of competence. The term generally has been five years, but if you're willing to serve more, you have the capacity on an annual basis to continue to do that. That's a a potential problem that that we have addressed. So voting participation has been very unclear with respect to who is empowered to vote, how many representatives there are. We've clarified that language. I've talked enough and I'd be happy to answer other questions and I hope that other board members, because we literally have spent a year debating the rough draft and and studying nuance and and making sure that that this is a document that really will fix the problems and make our conference work much, much better.
Carol Carlson has her hand up.
I would just like to offer an incredible word of gratitude to the board. You have struggled and worked and revised and you have presented a document that is appropriate for, excuse me, it says I'm supposed to start my video. It's a it's a document that's appropriate for a conference of this size with a lot of small churches and with associations that are struggling. And as the as somebody who has served as an interim conference minister here before Lynn came and is somebody who has covered for sabbaticals for staff, I just have to say that every time I've set foot in a conference setting, the struggle has been the antiquated bylaws and the rigidity and the difficulty of having a governance structure that is fine for the Connecticut Conference and isn't appropriate for a conference like Vermont. We have the opportunity here, I believe, to approve a document that also becomes more of a model for local churches who are struggling with exactly the same problem, whose nominating committees have to fill all these rigid boards because they're required and who don't have the chance to look at skills and experience because they have to fill all these slots. And I think we just need to say thank you and recognize that this is a flexible document. It's not perfect, but it certainly will go a long way towards solving a lot of our governance problems. So I thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Mark Pitten has his hand up. Mark.
Hi. Dick, you were talking about how these new bylaws has worked to fix some of the problems and you've been wonderful clear about how that has been true for the committee and board structure and the issues there and centralizing the the work is probably a really good thing and certainly most churches are also going in exactly this same way. I was wondering what issues you were responding to with the changes to the purpose, vision, mission and how these issues are being fixed with these bylaw changes.
Mark, thank you for your previous communication with Jean Zematero. We greatly appreciated it. The Purpose, Vision and Mission was adopted by the Board of Directors and we thought that it was particularly important to include the Purpose, Vision and Mission as the in the in in basically early part, because that's what we essentially stand for. The old Purpose, Vision and Mission that was expressed went on for eight pages of and included three, four pages of prayers. And we are a religious organization. We are in covenant. And so the Purpose, Vision and Mission really sum summarizes a covenantal relationship, which was actually developed by the National Synod, which is where a lot of this comes from. And 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 what we're trying to do is to say that our our whole purpose really is to be in covenant with one another under the UCC way of doing things. And and we want to do God's work and God's will in the UCC format, which the National Synod spent a lot of time when they got to the principle of mission, refining the language. It's it 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 it's as good as we could come up with. And that's why it's there. It's really the structural changes to the way the conference operates. Keeping the associations in the business of supporting pastors and congregations within their organization. Sean, who's the now no longer the Wyndham Union Organization, has spent a lot of time reinvigorating our association and we've they meet as a group about every two weeks by Zoom and or by person. They are remarkably supportive of each other. There's a whole retired ministers group by Larry Clock Crockett. And so we have changed the focus of the Wyndham Union to be terribly supportive. When asked to find a person to replace someone who didn't want to serve any longer or couldn't serve any longer in the Wyndham Union Board of Directors, Laurie Cruz found out about it and said, you might like this. And I was the only person in the entire Wyndham Union Organization to say, yeah, that might be interesting. And there are others that that need, we need to make sure that we're represented on the boards with lay leaders with with pastors, with a fully representative group of males and females, sexual orientation, and many of our board members satisfy under Andrew Nagy Benson's leadership, that very criteria we've ensured with people that have been appointed, that that very important Vermont Conference way of doing things is actually happening despite the fact that the that that other associations find it difficult. And so I think we will accomplish with this bylaws a leaner, meaner, more appropriate organization and structure that is representative of the values of the Vermont Conference. I hope that answers.
Yeah, I could stick to the answer to the question and and we're going to try to be a leaner, lovelier Vermont Conference, not meaner. Just a personal aside there. Ken White has his hand up next. Ken?
So just wanted to say, first of all, that I appreciate the work involved here. This is a big deal. I completely, as as a church that you know, we're having conversations around how we handle the number of slots we have with the number of people we have all the time, like this makes perfect sense and I think is great in a lot of ways. I I I I just want, I guess, to register, I I hear what's being said. I'm still scratching my head a little bit at the changes around the Purpose, Vision and Mission. Particularly being coupled with reorganization, business oriented sorts of 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 elements. And there's probably a lot of depth there that I'm not getting right now, but you know, to make more effective the common witness of Jesus Christ, that's a really beautiful statement that got Xed out for some other nice statements that seem to me to be less pointed and and a little softer around the edges. So so I get it. I'll vote for this. I'm very much, very much in support of the reorganization stuff, but um I'm I'm not super thrilled with these these particular changes in this area. I just wanted to share that. So thanks for giving me a chance.
Yep. Thank you, Ken. Appreciate it.
Mark had a question.
Well, I got Doug, please, next. Doug Carter.
Thank you, Peter. I just want to apologize for the background. I'm in Ontario and had to go to a coffee shop to get on the wifi somewhere. So it's an international meeting. I just want to take a moment and point out that the the work that was done and mission of the conference as Dick suggested, I do, we're wanting to connect that through same kind of work that was being done at the time at the national. So we're doing that work as conference. Is our denominational federation. For that work, I think that it could go to be something that.
We're hearing too much background noise. Is can you type it?
I can. I'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sally Mae next has her hand up next.
Thank you. I also appreciate all the work. My question may be getting into the minutia, but I noticed on page five of the new ones, it talks about the Holy Spirit and men and women. And I'm wondering about the youth and I'm wondering about the non-binary people in this. And I'm just thinking that language is pretty restrictive.
So noted. Thank you. Before I call on Mark, I just want to make sure nobody else wants to say something who hasn't yet said.
I I I think the the effort was not to exclude non-binary people, people who identify, but rather to speak to the importance of acknowledging the individuality and choices that each person makes. And regardless of your transgender society, transgender perspective, you are either you're a human being.
But I'm not I'm also talking about the youth. It excludes the youth in the conference. So maybe you should just put every person and leave it at that. Just men and women is very restrictive.
Okay. If we adopt this bylaw, we could easily propose exactly that change. I don't know what the parliamentarian is going to say. I have no difficulty because the intent of male and female was neither to eliminate youth or anybody else who identifies neither as a male or female. So the that that was not part of the language and the intent of the language that we used because that is actually the official position of the National Synod.
In response to, I believe Sally's asked the question, we would have to make an amendment. We if we approve the bylaws that are proved as written, an amendment would be required before we make that vote. Mark Pitten.
Yeah, thanks. I was going to comment that I'm not surprised that the purpose statement comes from the General Synod and the denomination, since that is the covenant partner that is referenced in the purpose of the conference and not the churches or the associations. But with that purpose and the covenantal relationship with the denomination, I also have to say that the conference minister's description is not serving that purpose. It is oh yes, spiritual leader, but then she becomes CEO, in our case, currently she. And you know, I think most pastors recognize this duality of hats that ministers have to wear and find it really difficult, let alone not being a this the bylaws not having anything in it for the conference minister, serving the stated purpose of the conference. Is there, again, an issue that was being fixed with that change?
Yeah, I maybe maybe you could answer Lynn, please. And and you had some other question. You had another response as well. So go ahead and say those.
Yeah, first of all, I want to go back to where Dick said that, you know, people get on committees and they never get off here. And that's true for some of the non-standing committees like so let's see, the clergy convocation committee, at least until recently, but all of, you know, the there are term limits on Board of Directors, on ministry of standing and standards, on nominating. So those major can I mean, it's hard to to find the replacements at the end of someone's term, but we do follow the the current bylaws about that. So I just wanted to clarify that. You know, Mark, you're raising a really good question and it's one that and I'm sure the Board of Directors can testify to this, that I I was I was uncomfortable with the way we were describing the the sort of roles and responsibilities of the conference minister. And I think, you know, debate went on and back and forth for a while. And that's I feel like what ended up in the in this proposed bylaws was kind of a compromise between folks who wanted to make sure that there was a CEO component to that position and those that wanted it to be closer to, you know, the spiritual the spiritual leader and and put more specifics in along those ways. So I I think this is and you know, please, any board member speak to this, but that's that's sort of the way I would describe it. And maybe somebody, I'm sorry, Dick, but maybe somebody besides you from the board could answer. Or not.
Or not. I I know that Lou has his hand up. Go ahead, Lou.
Um, I would like to propose an amendment about the gender language in our bylaws and change it from men and women to people.
Second.
I would like.
Go ahead.
I would like to make Lou, could you put the amendment to change it from men and women to people in the bylaws?
Do you mean in every instance? Or is there a specific instance?
In every instance, I think that we should be referencing people rather than binary gender language.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Could you put the official amendment in the chat so I can just copy and paste it, please?
Sure.
Thank you, Lou. It has been moved.
It's not just gender. It's also age because you're excluding all youth with that term, men and women.
Right. So before we talk. Right, so before we talk about it, let me just state that we're we've it's been moved and seconded. That uh all references to men and women in the proposed bylaws be changed to people. Would you like to speak further to that, Lou?
Uh. And age, adding youth in uh where it's appropriate to. I would just like to say that we had a resolution at General Synod this year regarding non-binary language. Um and I'm suggesting this in the spirit of recognizing that there are non-binary individuals in the Vermont Conference. So we need to acknowledge that and that transgendered um is not a term that basically covers the whole spectrum.
Nice.
Of non-binary.
So to to be clear, at the moment, the amendment that we're voting on or that we're talking about is is the inclusion of, is the use of people instead of men and women. Which in my understanding includes children, youth as well. The other. Comments, Lou, if you would lower your hand, then the next person will pop up into that spot. I can call on them. Take a moment, uh. Ken White wants to know, when did children become people?
Hmm. They always have been.
Definitional, I suppose, uh you're welcome to uh make an amendment to the amendment, if you'd like, that's about as far as we go, though. To clarify that. Yeah, I'm doing too many things at once, uh all right, seeing no other um hands raised, I assume you're ready for the question. The question is, uh Jackie, are you ready to go with a poll?
Uh, which one?
On the amendment?
Um so not the bylaws piece?
Correct, we will be voting on.
I'm doing it right now.
Okay, we or we can call it amendment one, if that's easier for you.
Um I'm just putting it in, hold on.
Okay. Bear with us. You are voting on the question whether we should approve the amendment. To change all instances of men and women in the bylaws to people. Soon as the poll is ready, it'll be given to you.
I think I have it right, so let me know if this is right.
That's good.
Thank you. So one more second, we have ninety-eight percent who's voted and um Amanda put in that Rosemarie would also voted yes. In the chat. And I'll close the poll now.
The. Motion to amend the previous motion to accept the bylaws by inserting. Uh or by changing all instances of men and women to people has been approved ninety-eight percent to zero percent with two percent abstaining. Thank you very much, that will become part of the bylaws that we're discussing now. Again, raise your hand and you'll pop up for me to see. Are you ready for the question? It has been moved and seconded that the proposed bylaws be approved. Jackie will send out a poll.
Uh I would just verify that that should read, should be adopted as amended.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
Oh, sorry, do you want me to switch that and then relaunch?
I don't think it's necessary with one amendment only.
So we have one more minute, or not minute, but few seconds, um eighty-six have voted. Um we're usually up to the ninety, that's we've been doing, so. I'll give you just a few more seconds.
Think that we, yeah, I think that we have somebody who's, Mark Pitten's looking for power for his laptop, so I'll give him a second. The perils of electronic voting.
Yes, and someone else um in the chat said that they were voting yes, but had to leave.
Yeah, that's I I told them previously that unfortunately I can't officially count that vote.
Gotcha. Oh, Matt, Mark says he's voted.
Yep, yep, okay.
Okay.
So the eyes have it, you have approved the new bylaws as they were amended most recently by ninety-six percent to two percent saying no to two percent abstaining. Thank you very much, everybody. You've all uh indicated how much uh who have worked on this, how much time and effort has gone into it, and many of you have acknowledged that, and we appreciate your time today for that, for this consideration. Uh it's it's it's, I didn't think it would be a moving moment, but it is uh after all this work, so thank you. Uh is there any other business to come before the body?
Just thank you to you, Peter, for presiding.
Oh, you're welcome. My honor.
I think it would be um if people would, just a few seconds, if we could just introduce. Um or people could introduce themselves, I just wanted to, and I don't know if Paul would like to do that or Lynn. Um but Corinne that you heard that asked a question is the new pastor at Waybridge. Um Bill Neal, who you heard on the phone, is a new retired pastor to our conferences. Some welcomes to anyone else and Allison, who's not new, but is also the new pastor at Berlin. Um and um. Uh Mary Holdley was here and she will be having her ecclesiastical council.
Oh, great.
November thirtieth, and uh so if there's someone else who would like to say hello and uh that are new to the conference, we just want to welcome you.
Yeah, thank you, Jackie.
Greg is, Greg is out there.
Yeah, right, yes, thank you.
Yeah, hi, I'm. Hi, I'm Greg Briggs, uh I literally moved to to Vermont a month and a half ago um from the Michigan, I still have standing in the Michigan Conference Covenant Association. Um but I'm currently living in Middletown Springs and uh getting settled into Vermont, so. Um never thought I'd be so excited to attend an uh special meeting of an annual conference, but it's been really great hearing you all talk and uh seeing the good work that's being done. So I look forward to working with you and getting to know you all.
Thank you, Greg.
And I'd like to say a word of appreciation to Jackie. Um you know, normally this uh this responsibility would have fallen to uh Elise, but Elise is just back off of maternity leave. And Jackie was kind enough to pick up this responsibility and and as she does everything, do it magnificently.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jackie. Your help has been great. All right, any other business to, uh Marjorie has her hand up.
Oh, I just wanted to send, I just wanted to send greetings from San Antonio, Texas, where I'm visiting my daughter, and they're holding breakfast for me, so I am going to leave you now. And we're an hour behind you, so.
Okay.
Been wonderful to be able to attend.
I suspect we have one more motion on the floor, which is simply to.
I move, we adjourn.
Is there a second? Uh we need a sec, we do need.
Totally, I second that.
And rather than have a poll, let's just stick your hand up um and vote. All right, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody, for your time this morning, we much appreciate it.